Well, good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco's council meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and Microsoft Teams webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, if we can get the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, Barajas?
Present.
Cotta?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Peralas?
Here.
Mayor Protem Grimm?
Here.
And Mayor Milne?
I am here.
Thank you.
With that, if we could all rise for the Bledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, with that, we're going to roll to number four with his, the oath of City Council Office. So we have a new city councilman here, and he's going to work with Debbie, and you're going to take your oath of as, of a city councilman.
Mr. Figueroa is here tonight? Nope? Okay. Yes? If you could, oh, there you are, hello. I'd appreciate if you could two could come up here and raise your right hands and repeat after me. Now, when we do this, you can either swear or you can affirm, so you decide on that one. Are you guys ready? Great. I state your name.
I, Lieutenant Figueroa.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
And all the local ordinances
And all the local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office of council member
Performing and discharge the duties of
Council member. Great, good. According to law
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. Great, congratulations. Thank you, thank you.
have any pictures with their family, or, um, did you want to take some pictures? Okay, well, let's take a five-minute recess right now at 7:05, and we'll be back at 7:10. So we have one here, a recess if, if Mr. Hernandez or our new councilmember, if they Okay, well, let's take a five-minute recess right now at 7:05, and we'll be back at 7:10. Get their seats.
Time to get to work. Call this thing, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Bring your chambers back and order it.
Well, we are back from recess, so if we can have everybody be quiet, I'd appreciate it. All right. So if we can have everybody sit down and we get the meeting moving.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Serrano.
All right, so we're jumping to item number six, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are, okay, can you guys be quiet, please? Are considered to be routine by the City Council will be enacted by a roll call vote as one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by councilmembers, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes for November 17th and November 24th. B, Bills and Communications Approving Claims in the Total Amount of $4,312,259.65. Item Number 4806, Amending PMC Section 10.70.080, Schedule III, Parking Prohibited in All Times on Certain Streets. D, Resolution Number 4682, Awarding Bid Number 22396 for Sylvester Piper Pear Fifth Avenue to 10th Avenue to Big D's Construction of Tri-Cities. Number E, Resolution Number 4683, Awarding Bid Number 25635 Butterfield Water Treatment Plant Raw Water Permegrate System. Item F, Resolution Number 4684, Purchase Fire Ladder Truck. Item G, Resolution Number 4685, Office Closure for the Public for Christmas Eve Day. Number H, Approval, Approve Visit Tri-Cities Tourism Promotion Area Reserve Fund Request in the 2026 Work Plan. Item I, Civil Service Commission Personal Award Appointments for Silvia Gordinas. Item J, Franklin County Mosquito Board District Control District Board of Trustees Reappointment of Angie Stoddard. Item K, Resolution Number 4690, Agenda Setting Policy for Regular and Special City Council Meetings and Workshops. Mayor Protem, can I get a motion?
Yes, sir. I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
So we got a motion by Mayor Protem Grimm, and we got a second by Councilwoman Barajas. If I can get a roll call vote on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Cotta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas?
No.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Grimm?
Yes.
Mayor Milne?
Ah, yes, yes.
Passes five to one, five to one.
All right, well, thank you for that. We're going to move on to Proclamations and Acknowledgements, which is seven, which is something that's close to my heart, which is Pasco Leadership Recognition. So we've had some amazing mayors in the last 10 years, eight of them have been on council. So I know almost all of them, except for Joyce Myers, and I've become good friends with all the Mayor Protems. Joyce, Joyce Olson, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, Joyce Olson, sorry about that. Um, but yeah, became good friends, and so kind of wanted to do something since being a leader, you don't really get recognized, um, and I just thought it'd be a nice way to do something when people step up and dedicate their lives to the city and their time and efforts, and you don't do it for the money, you do it for the love of city, and, uh, so just want to do a small token of my appreciation and I believe the rest of the council of these individuals in the City of Pasco that have really stepped up and made a difference. So with that, I would like to start off with, we are going to give Mr. Serrano, who I see in the back room, we're going to, I'll let him have the proclamation, but we're going to give him December 1st will be here known as Pete Serrano Day, and we got a plaque for his outstanding service. (applause) All right, and with that, we are going to go to our Councilwoman Barajas, and again, much appreciate her service, all the dedication, I've known her for eight years, and, uh, even though we might not see eye to eye, I know she has Pasco interest in her heart, and she's very dedicated to the City of Pasco, and for that I'm very thankful. So, December 2nd, so again, it's Blanche Barajas Day. (applause) So we're going in order, so we're going to call Saul Martinez, again, known him for, uh-
Thank you. I appreciate, so I don't have to yell, but I've known Saul Martinez, uh, he's quite the Harley guy, so I, uh, I've seen him around town, and again, he's just a stand-up guy, and again, really has dedicated his life to serving the City of Pasco, and, uh, again, I think he's done a great job in everything that I've known him to do. So with that, you could tell all his family, and there's a lot of them, you could tell that, uh, basically December 3rd is Saul Martinez Day.
All right.
Thank you.
We get to hang that in your office and, uh-
Thank you.
Appreciate you being mayor.
All right, thank you very much. (applause)
All right, and this individual, uh, again, is Mr. Matt Watkins, who has shaped Pasco for a number of years, and, uh, I'll say his dedication and service, we still see him on a regular basis, I've came to City Hall and ran into him, so, uh, again, somebody that just can't get enough of this place, but, uh, every time I think of mayor, actually I think of him, just because it seems like he's, he's been here and he's the ideal mayor in that, uh, he's always there, and again, he doesn't do politics, he just wants to do what's ever best for the City of Pasco, and again, he's been here it seems like forever, so, uh, I do, I much appreciate it. So with that, as you can tell, you get December 4th. Yes, your own day, and it's Matt Watkins' Day, and there's your proclamation, and then again, here's your, uh, your plaque. All right, all right, thank you.
Happy day. Thank you, sir. I need to go to the next one.
So yes, the next one, who unfortunately I've never had the privilege of meeting, it is Joyce Olson Day, which would be the December 5th, and I know she can't be here, but she does want to say some words, and I guess she lives in Florida, but I've always heard nice things about your time as mayor, and with that, um, here's your proclamation, and here's your plaque, and I believe that you'd like to say some words, so we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Hey, Joyce, can you unmute yourself? We can't hear you on this end.
Okay, great. I'm pleased to join you remotely from Florida, and I'd like to thank Mayor Milne and the council members for this recognition. I lived in Pasco for 33 years and had the privilege of serving as Pasco's mayor for many terms. When I took office in 1989, plans were already underway to construct the Cable Bridge, and if I recall back then, the big issue was consolidation, the talk of consolidating Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland into one city, it was a very controversial issue and a very hot topic. Pasco has changed a lot since then, and as I reflect back on all of the changes and the growth, quality of life improvements, the partnerships that were forged, especially with the Port of Pasco, and all the development, it's breathtaking. So at one point in time, Pasco had become known as one of the fastest-growing cities in the Pacific Northwest. I always enjoyed serving my community and promoting Pasco and being part of a team of individuals that were dedicated to Pasco and worked hard to shape its destiny, including most especially our former city manager Gary Crutchfield and some outstanding council members over the course of time. So thank you again for this honor. I appreciate being a part of Pasco's legacy, and the proclamation and the plaque will be special keepsakes that I will cherish. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your kind words, thank you. All right, with that, we're going to move on to Mayor Protem, and, uh, again, he gets his own day as well, and somebody that, uh, glad to call my friend, and it's a former councilman, and again, Mayor Protem, Craig Maloney. So if you know Craig, you know this man is a man of detail, and a man of excellence, and a man that I've come to admire for all his hard work, dedication, uh, again, can't say enough with an eye, again, you have the chance of seeing him, he has a wine shop in downtown Pasco, and, uh, again, just a, a guy that's dedicated to Pasco, downtown Pasco, and whatever he does, it always seems like he lives and breathes Pasco. So again, you got December 6th is your own day, so hopefully you're able to, to post that in your house, and then again, a plaque for all your hard work done for our city, so thank you. All right, thank you, thank you for everything. All right. And for this special individual, uh, she's online, but, uh, again, uh, she's the longest-serving councilwoman, I know that for a fact, but probably councilperson in the history of Pasco, uh, was it 21 years or 23 years?
21.
21. Well, I guess my first guess was right, but, uh, again, she was, uh, definitely, uh, an advocate for Pasco, again, somebody that always is in a good mood, and, uh, it's always a pleasure seeing her and her husband around town, and again, just a pleasure to have known her, and, uh, again, somebody that I also look up to, so again, uh, it's proud to have you serve on the council, and again, I'm giving you December 7th, and again, that's not a framed Pearl Harbor or nothing like that, just, that's how it fell in the week, so, uh, you know, the day of infamy there, but, uh, again, we love everything you've done, we love your service to our city, and so December 7th is Rebecca Franzic Day, and again, we have a plaque for you as well, for all your hard work, and we'd love to hear some, uh, words, if you'd like to say something.
Well, I'd just like to echo what Joyce said, I worked with some stellar council members, uh, under Gary Crutchfield, and then later under Dave Zabel, uh, we were always, our councils, um, our, our biggest challenge was to bring in the industrial area because we needed more tax base and long-term planning, and my goodness, has that paid off. Um, but I think what I want to say most is how much I appreciate the community letting me represent them. I think we, our council really believed that there was nothing political about poples, there was nothing political about parks, we were a community, and we worked to serve the entire community, and sometimes that was challenging, but, um, that was the forefront of our mind, is that Pasco is an entire community, and everyone benefits when we all pull together and serve everyone equally. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. And here's another longtime Pasco councilman, uh, and somebody that, uh, very popular in the community, you'd always see him in a cool truck or a cool vehicle, and, uh, again, one of the guys that got me into running for council with his good advice, and somebody that I always enjoy seeing around town, and that is Ali Yanni. (applause) Yeah, yeah, all the stuff I've missed, yeah. All right, were you able to give it? All right, again, thank you.
(inaudible).
Okay, do you want to say it now?
I don't know if the micros, well, you know, a lot of people don't realize that, but this television is something that I started out with, two and a half years, I filmed this council on my own dime, which actually was, I was probably the most advanced councilmember when I come on board, because I would film it on Monday, have to change it from Super 8 to VHF on Tuesday, and have the charter on Wednesday, so I had a lot of time in this. And then something I want to mention to councilmembers, one thing I always want to be known as is, I don't want to be known as a politician, I want to be known as a statesman. A politician is all he worries about is the next election, a statesman worries about the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. There's your, uh, thanks again, Mr. Ali Yanni, again, uh, we appreciate everything you've done for the City of Pasco. And the last one is for Bob Hoffman, and I heard that he's traveling to see family or vacation or something like that. Anyway, unfortunately, he can't be here, um, but again, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Hoffman for 12 years of excellent service for the City of Pasco. Uh, again, it's not often that you get councilmembers that are able to serve so long and have an impact on the City of Pasco, and with that, I'm proud to call him my friend as well, so, thank you. Here's the, the mic. All right, well, thank you, everybody, for attending and, uh, being able to let me do that. Again, it's been a real honor to have so many people that I've been able to call my friends, and again, know that, uh, every one of them was very dedicated to the City of Pasco, and, uh, again, they always had Pasco's best interests at heart, and so that's a very nice to see. So with that, we're going to move to number eight, which is public comments. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the purpose of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after deliberate process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor, so there's a little timer right there. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. Lastly, when called upon, please state your name and city or county residency into the microphone before providing your comments. So with that, do we have any member of the audience that would like to make a public comment? All right, the gentleman in the blue.
Right here?
Yeah, and just, uh, there should be a button at the bottom to turn it on.
Yep, all right. Um, councilmembers, my name is Matt Billings, this is my son Atlas, I was born and raised here in Pasco, and now I raise my own family here in Pasco. Um, I wanted to bring up an idea to the table that I think could be a big win for our city, building a pump track for BMX riders here in Pasco, possibly at a new regional park that may be coming up soon. Right now, the only BMX track is in the, that's in the Tri-Cities is the Columbia Basin BMX near Horn Rapids and Richland. Nearly every year, they host either a state and/or national race, and it, those events pull in hundreds of thousands of dollars for the local economy. Kennewick recently built their own pump track, and while it's not too far into Kennewick, you still need to cross the river to get to it. Meanwhile, Pasco has a growing group of competitive riders who have to leave town just to practice. In my own family and my in-laws' households alone, we have six riders. And there are plenty other kids in our neighborhood, in our immediate neighborhood, that also ride. Pumping is an essential and important skill for BMX riders. Every single track has a dedicated stretch of the racetrack- Every single track has a dedicated stretch of the racetrack dedicated for pumping and pumping can decide if you win or lose. The BMX community is very tight-knit, super motivated, and when something new opens, word spreads fast. If Pasco builds a serious, well-designed pump track, that's not just something for small or little kids, but a fully realized pump track that riders of all ages can actually train on and it will get used every day. And honestly, this is an opportunity to get ahead. If Pasco doesn't move on it, Richland absolutely will. Kennewick already did, so we have a chance to be the city that brings riders into Pasco instead of sending them out. A pump track isn't just a fun thing for the kids, it's a community resource, a tourism draw and a way to invest a healthy outdoor activity for families and it's something that would get used immediately year-round. I'm not asking for a decision tonight, of course, I just, I'm just asking that the city council kind of have the seed planted in their minds and consider looking into it, running the numbers and seeing what it would take to get it done. I think you'll find the return on this is huge for the cost. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. I would suggest like if I'll maybe send your proposal to the city staff, to the city council and maybe also send an email to Director Rice or something like that that'd be on the parking rec board so we could, I'm on the parking rec board, but you know, somebody on the city staff that could actually get a better look at your proposal. So just, if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Will do.
All right. So anybody else, member of the audience? We got the gal sitting right next to you.
Hello?
All right, the mic's on. Thanks.
Okay. Dear City Council Members, hi, my name is Addie. I live in Pasco and enjoy riding bikes. I'm here with my sisters, my sisters, and we're here to also ask you about a pump track to our city. Having a pump track in Pasco would give kids like me and my sisters a fun and safe place to practice bike skills instead of riding in busy streets or unsafe areas. Pump tracks offer entertainment for a wide variety of skills and ages and would help our whole community. Having this type of park in Pasco would encourage kids and families to spend more time outside, being active and healthy. Riding on a pump track is a great exercise, but it's also so much fun. It helps with balance, confidence, and is a great opportunity to get outside instead of staying home on screens all day. We have several parks around our area geared towards younger kids, but adding a pump track would also allow older kids, would also allow older kids a positive place to hang out. I believe Casadale Soul would be a good location for adding a pump track. This park has the space to accommodate a pump track and there's also plenty of parking along the road for parents who need to drive their kids to the pump track. This park is located near two different schools, so it'd be a great addition for all the children in the neighborhoods surrounding Casadale Soul. If the pump track is located in a neighborhood, then it would allow kids to get there easily and safely without needing a ride from their parents. Thank you for your time and I hope that you will take into consideration the addition of a pump track in Pasco. I strongly believe it would be a wonderful addition to this area and that it would provide years of enjoyment for kids and families in this community.
All right. Again, thank you for that public comment. It was appreciated. You did a very good job reading that. You should go into public speaking. All right. I think there was a gentleman in the very back that, yes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Wilson, Steve Wilson, you know, from Pasco. I'd like to mention that we've been doing a lot of construction, of course, you know, over in the Broadmore area. It's come along nicely, you know, I mean, we're dealing with it and all that. I'd like to point out that the off-ramp on I-182 coming from Richland, when it gets backed up, there's no visibility there to see, to, you know, to gauge it. You can only tell if people are backed up around the dirt. And coming in from 60, 70 miles an hour to the recommended speed of the off-ramp, whatever that is, especially during rush hour, you know, if you've been on that stretch during that time, how dangerous and potentially dangerous it could, it could be. I would also like to point out that since we have crews over there already, it shouldn't be too difficult, if it were possible, to remove the dirt from that off-ramp. So at least as we come off the highway, we could have some visibility and at least have maybe a little more time to react to the traffic that's backing up. So I thought I'd point that out and see if there was any way we could have a look at that. All right. Well, thank you. One more thing, I looked at the public comments from last, the last regular meeting on November 17th. It is clear to me that local citizens are requesting that the city council maintain a standard of wisdom that incorporates taking time and allowing a little more time for such processes as public feedback and participation when appropriate. I mean, I realize sometimes you got to strike when the iron's hot. Opportunities only present themselves, you know, maybe once, if that. It's good to spot those. I'm just asking, as was requested at the last regular city council meeting, that sometimes when it's important, you maybe step back, like, like you did, I feel you did that with the fluoride thing. I mean, there's been some criticism, but hey, I haven't weighed in because if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The cost is the thing with me and that's it. I don't care about the other stuff. I know other people do, but I think you gave the public plenty of time to hear us, hear it out. So I would just say incorporate that wisdom into your choices going forward. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else in the audience? I know we, the...
Good evening, Lori Thompson, Pasco. First of all, I'd like to welcome our new council member Hernandez. Thank you for your service here. I'm here to support our fire, ambulance and EMS services and recognize the support requirements to maintain best service practices and financial solvency for those essential life-saving community requirements. Noted the motion A increase, this is regarding ordinance 4805, sorry. Noted the motion A increase then puts Pasco at the top, well above the tri-cities and surrounding area in ambulance utility fees. I calculate, looking at the chart that is in the agenda packet, this additional increase in utility building for 2026 to be over $138 annually per household and that's almost as much in my estimation as the total average 2026 yearly 2.8% social security cost of living increase and after, then they're going to take an increase in Medicare fees. So I just want to say that while I do support the motion A, I would like to see that pass. I just would like the council and the city staff to recognize how that impacts low income and people on fixed incomes. And then considering that burden, perhaps we could ask that the council and city staff curtail any expenditures possible, not absolutely necessary to support critical function and other city services. Carryover is a good thing. Maybe we need to embrace a more conservative stance and reduce proposed expenditures on developing or renovating more parks and financing celebrations, bearing in mind that these increases for services we need are kind of a burden. But in the end, I do support that we choose motion A at 80% for ordinance 4805 and the 100% rate increases out of the question. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have anybody else? I know we always get Mary Maloney, so why don't you? We got a gentleman in the back as well.
I was told you'd never had a musical public conference before.
No, I, ten, eight years, I don't remember that ever being a thing.
I talked to the clerk. She said she didn't remember it. Do I need to press this button?
Ah, no, you're on.
Okay. My name is David Koho. I'm from Pasco. When the cavities start a mountain in this town, when the cavities start a mountain in this town, we'll remember how you voted when the kids' teeth are corroded. When the cavities start a mountain in this town, when the survey said to keep it in the glass, when the survey said to keep it in the glass, you still called it just a coin flip, but more people said to keep it when the survey said to keep it in the glass. When you cherry pick your studies from the fringe, when you cherry pick your studies from the fringe, you tune out the docs and dentists who still tell us just to keep it when you cherry pick your studies from the fringe. When the kiddos miss the classroom from their pain, when the kiddos miss the classroom for their pain, every toothache every hour says you traded kids' health power for a headline and a courtroom hurricane. When election time comes round here once again, when election time comes round here once again, we'll recall this fluoridation and this public participation when you knock and say, "I'd like your vote, my friend." When the council learns to listen to the town, when the council learns to listen to the town, we'll keep water dueling, healing, not just politics and wheeling, till the cavities stop mounting in this town. As disappointing as the 4-2 vote was to remove Florida, it was even more disappointing to learn the bad faith and low information way our council works. Ignore public comment, ignore the citizen survey, ignore decades of established science in public health, act in a way that directly harms the people in our community and it seems to act on a premeditated decision to serve a personal agenda. We'll remember how you voted when the kids' teeth are corroded. When the cavities start a mountain in this town. Thank you.
All right. I think we have the gal in the white jacket, yes.
Good evening. My name is Alondra Parra. I live in Richland, but I work in Pasco. I'm here as a parent of a student who attends Nueva Esperanza Leadership Academy, which is located off A Street and within the Tierra Vida community to request the installation of a clearly marked crosswalk. After entering Tierra Vida Lane, this location currently lacks a safe pedestrian crossing. Even though it is used daily by students, families, school staff and neighborhood residents during morning drop-off and afternoon dismissal, dozens of children and parents cross the street at this location. Many also walk to nearby bus stops, homes and community facilities. Vehicles frequently travel at high speeds along this stretch and drivers often do not slow down or stop because there's no designated crossing. Throughout the day, the school staff have to stop traffic to allow students to cross to the playground during recess and to use a rec center facility located in the Tierra Vida community. This creates a hazardous environment where children must judge gaps in traffic rather than rely on a protected crossing point. The curb parked cars restrict visibility for both pedestrians and drivers, increasing risk, especially during early morning hours and now with the sun setting earlier in the evening. This will be, this will benefit the entire community, residents who walk to nearby bus stops, families with young children and drivers because a designated crosswalk will reduce unexpected pedestrian movement and improves traffic flow. We respectfully request that the city conducts a traffic and safety evaluation between the Collegium Cafe and Nila on Tierra Vida Lane, approve installation of a high-visibility crosswalk, potentially combined with pedestrian signage, flashing beacons or curb extensions, whichever the traffic engineers deem appropriate. Thank you for your time and I can leave my contact information with the clerk.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I would recommend also reaching out to Mayor Protem Grimm. That looks like that's his district and it looks like he's actually already have it pulled up and again, you might want to again, touch base with him again on that. Do we have any other members that would like to make a comment or sing a song?
It's on?
It is.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident. Provide golden parachute retirement plans in a total for our taxes paid out to, one, the Cur Law Group and proxies, two, the GMP consultants with ex-Pasco city manager Dave Zabel. Next, animal control continues to send and/or sell our dogs and cats to WSU for research, then they're killed, provide a permit. And now Tri-City Animal Services Animal Control has devised a usage pay system that puts a bounty on our dogs and cats and requires a ransom to be paid to get our pets out of animal control. On 10/6/25, Pasco city manager report listed on page four, 232 recent animal control cases. For those cases, provide, one, the total for the usage pay fines, two, the number of due process violations as authorized by Pasco city attorney Lee Kerr, three, the number of dangerous dog and breed ban notices issued with and without translators, for those that need a translator, four, the number of dogs and cats sent to WSU for research and the money paid by WSU for our dogs and cats to be used for research. For decades, animal control has performed botched and cruel euthanasia methods without technical training. Provide training updates, see Ben Ziegler files. Pasco has never provided results for animal control regarding, one, the 48 counts of animal cruelty, two, the stolen $545,000 donated by our local veteran, Thomas Ashby, in his will, three, the $300,000 siphoned off by animal control Julie Chambers she used to buy a house, four, the missing and/or stolen rainy day fund with animal control rehire Angela Zeiler, see Chambers, Howard, Hernandez, Zeiler and the Tri-City Herald on 11/26/25 with the attorney general filing 9/29/23. With over a half a billion dollar CIP budget made up by our tax dollars, Pasco gives nothing to our homeless people and no funds for a low-cost bayneuter clinic for our dogs and cats and yet, ex-Pasco mayor Matt Watkins is paid nearly $11,000 per month plus his travel expenses. Provide for, one, his passport and travel expenses, two, the total cost for the Pasco Aquatic Center, including two lazy rivers. Provide fines paid by Pasco and Hayden Homes for violating the migratory bird treaty act and for killing our eight floodplain American bald eagles and their eaglets. See the videos and photos. Provide a permit number 404 for the floodplain sewer station and for the Road 48 Community Park include water contamination reports with ruptured sewer pipes. See photos. Provide all ULID-LID designs for my property include cost, start dates, US mail notice to me and all Pasco communications regarding harassment and retaliation against me and my property. See files. All requests are for the record via RCW 42.56 and to put Pasco on notice.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. Do we have any other members of the audience that would like to make a comment? All right. Well, I'm not seeing any. So we are going to jump to item nine, which is reports from committee and officers. So do we have anybody that did something this last week? Let's start off with Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, with councilmember Paralisai, attended the city attorney selection committee with, with staff to go over the couple requests for proposals we had so that we can have a... so that we can have a plan January 1st. And then I wanted to thank Staff Two for another hour after that, immediately following that, where our budget amendments that we looked at last week, I had a number of questions regarding that. And Ms. Garcia, the City Manager and Deputy City Manager, all sat down with me with charts and spreadsheets. And they really took the time to answer every question I had, explain it. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that. Let's go on to Councilman Peralis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. I didn't attend it, but I was watching the Tri-City Prep football team on my phone as I was doing Honeydew List stuff. But I just want to give them a shout-out in the beginning of the meeting as opposed to part three hours from now. They're going to the state to beat championships. So I think we should be proud, and they're the only team that's made it that far in the state playoffs this year. So just want to give them a shout-out.
All right, well, congratulations to Tri-City Prep. I'm not seeing any other lights on. So let's move on to item number 10. Hearings and council action on ordinance and resolutions related thereto. Number A, Public Hearing and Ordinance Number 4807, the 2025-2026 proposed biennium budget adjustment. And we're going to have interim Director Garcia.
Good evening, Council. So last week, we presented the proposed budget. A lot of these are the same type of information. So overall, just highlighting the fund balance specifically for the general fund and Economic Development Fund, which has... There's some general fund funds in that fund that can be transferred over if needed by council action. Just high level. At the citywide level, we are proposing an increase in revenue of $130 million, mainly due to energy tax credit and investment income. And also an increase to, based off of a recent approval of increasing the utility tax rate. And for on the expense side, overall, it's citywide across all funds, increase in expenses of $80 million. And a lot of that has to do with increases to some inter-local agreements, land purchase, and the medical premiums that also go across all funds. A large part of it is related to the reuse facility that rate model was approved after the budget was adopted last year. So that was kind of a known item that was going to be requiring an amendment, and it's both revenue and expenses on that just because of the rate model significantly changed the operations of that fund. And I apologize for it being so small. So on the general fund, it is kind of the very broad fund that includes a lot of the kind of general items such as police, fire, IT, HR, finance. So all those departments are all within the general fund. So here we have just the different departments and the increases for each. But overall, with some of the more notable items is on the revenue side. There's a decrease in revenue in the permitting department just because there's a decrease in that activity so far. So we are reducing the revenue there just to be conservative. And then there's some increases in revenue for investments. And overall, just increases due to some recently approved union agreements. So we just have some high-level items by fund. Overall, the street fund is increasing revenue by a million and is mainly to help cover some shortfall due to decrease in revenue in that fund. And there's also an increase due to some funding that's specifically for a project, and that's kind of a wash because that same funding has to go to a specific project. Okay, and for the REIT fund and Economic Development Fund, the main increases is investment in income and also some costs related to the regional 911 system. And then some, a recent loan that was approved for the medical fund on the economic side. And all the utilities are managed separately, but they're all kind of rolled up to one fund. So that's for water, sewer, irrigation, and the reuse facility and stormwater. So again, the major impacts there are mainly tied to the reuse facility and the rate model, and that changes both the revenue and expenses. And then the medical fund, there's increases there based off of the new plans, new contracts, and the corresponding premium increases. And this is essentially what I just shared, just detailed by fund. The items in the gray are items that have already been approved throughout the year by council, mainly the carryover that's tied to capital. So that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And we are proposing approval of the budget amendment ordinance.
All right, well, thank you for that presentation. I think we're going to start off with Mayor Protem Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate, thank you to Ms. Garcia, the Deputy City Manager and the City Manager for spending an hour with me, literally going almost line by line through that, answered every question in my satisfaction, and I'm happy to approve this amendment, Mr. Mayor.
All right, glad to hear that. Let's jump to Councilman Peralis.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to the previous screen for me, please? So at the end of 2026, or for this biennium, we're looking at roughly $10.5 million. Is that, that's the deficit?
For the general fund, yes.
The general fund for, so, and that's for the two, for our biennium. And so we're looking pretty good because initially, we were looking at around 15. It was like eight and seven.
Yeah, and part of it is, so there's operational and then capital. So the capital spending is, we kind of knew that that was, of course, going to happen because that is funded by debt, right? So that money can only be spent on capital.
Yeah. No, I appreciate the presentation and going over it last week. I'm still going to be a no vote just because I think we need to start really having the hard conversations, especially in this next year's budget cycle that's going to be coming up here in 2026. I was a no vote when we did the budget during last biennium. So I just, I really didn't think we need to start looking at our revenue options. You know, that T-word, that, we got to look at our taxes a little bit because we really got to start shoring things up. We're doing, we're looking at many decisions to kind of start closing that delta. I don't feel comfortable. I think some people on the council feel comfortable saying, "Okay," because we got to get these bills paid. But at the same time, at what cost do we, you know, we need to start really making some hard decisions? Because I'm looking at other cities. They're making cuts. It just seems like we're not really having those conversations to start doing that. So I'm going to be a no vote, but I really do appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your honesty. I do appreciate it. Any other members like to make a comment or say anything before we open up a public hearing? I'm not seeing anything. So with that, we're going to open it up to the public. If you'd like to comment on this, and you again would have three minutes. So anybody from the public like to comment on the budget proposal? Going once, going twice. All right, let's go three times. And we'll close the public hearing. And with that, if I could get a motion, Mayor Protem Grimm.
Yes, sir. I move to adopt ordinance number 4807, amending the 2025 to 2026 biennial operating budget, ordinance number 4749, by providing supplement thereto to provide additional appropriation in the city's funds and further authorize publication by summary only.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grimm, and we got a second by Councilwoman Brahas. And with that, I know usually it's just a yea or nay, but let's go with the roll call since this is an issue dealing with our budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Cotta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralis?
Who?
Councilmember Brahas?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grimm?
Yes.
And Mayor Milne?
B, yes as well.
Thank you. It passes five to one.
All right. So with that, we're going to move on to number 11, which is ordinance and resolutions not related to hearings. So we have number A, which is ordinance number 4810, appointment. Was that one, I think that one got cut, or was that one still here?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. By state law, the council has to appoint the municipal court judge by December 1st of every year. So the appointment needs to happen today. The swearing-in will not happen. We'll do that next week.
Okay.
I do just want to, you know, publicly thank Judge Stilwell for the services provided our community for the last four years. But we did go through an interview process last week. And my recommendation tonight is that Carlos Villarreal be appointed as the municipal court judge for the next four years. So stand for any questions if the council has any at this time.
All right. Does anybody on the dais have any questions on this particular appointment? I'm not seeing any, so if I could get a motion, Mayor Protem Grimm.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4810, confirming the city manager's appointment of Carlos D. Villarreal as municipal court judge, affixing the compensation of the municipal court judge and Judge Protem, and authorizing the city manager to accept, to execute a personal services agreement for Judge Villarreal for judicial services and further authorize publication by summary only.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grimm, and we have a second by Councilman Peralis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Looks like it's unanimous. All right, so we're going to go on to item B, ordinance number 4808 and ordinance number 4809, 2026 administrative professional wage and management salary plans. And this is also going to be done by our city manager, Harold Stewart.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this is part of our annual wage and salary adjustments and plans. Would like to turn some time over to our HR director. She's done the bulk of the work on this. I'd also like to express appreciation publicly for our interim finance director and deputy clerk, I'm sorry, not deputy clerk, deputy city manager, who have also put in a lot of time on this. In essence, this will approve the annual COLA increase for all staff. It'll address some compression issues that we have within our wage plan and help modernize our wage plan going forward. But either myself or our HR director can answer any questions if the council has any on this issue.
All right, thank you for that report. Does anybody here on the dais have any questions or?
I just have a comment.
All right.
Because someone's just going to make a motion for both ordinances, or we're going to go. So I'm going to be a yes vote on the first ordinance, which would be for the staff. But I guess when it comes to the management, I guess I'm not, I can't really wrap my head around it. I understand it's a COLA, it's 2%. You give your various reasons, but I mean, it looks like the, based, for the management salary, excuse me, the schedule I see, the lowest paid person on here is $108,000. That's some good, that's some good money, right? And I look at like the cost, I mean, the common household in Pasco is like $80,000 bucks. I mean, are people really going to leave over a 1%, 2%? I said this the last time, sure, but it's like, you know, you can throw in morale in there, but it comes to a certain point to the last thing we just kind of talked about with the budget and stuff. We need to start making concessions somewhere. I think people who work here need to understand, we need to figure stuff out. Bring in revenue. I would love to get fewer raises. At the same time, we need to be fiscally conservative, and I'm going to be pretty conservative when it comes to our budget and what we're spending. So I'm going to be a no vote on that just because, again, I think you're making six figures. I mean, that's one person, right? That's a lot more than the $80,000 I was just talking about. So for me, you know, they're doing a great job. I know, I've seen a lot of them, they're doing great work. Nothing bad to say, but it just gets to a point where we really have to start having those conversations. So really no questions for you, just really a comment. Thank you.
All right, did you want to make a comment or?
No, I just wanted to...
Oh, you just turned off the mic?
Sorry. I just wanted to kind of communicate. So a lot of the non-exempt employees that are union get paid quite a bit more than some of our managers and/or directors. We also have some compression issues with management, with the bargaining unit employees. So we need to kind of address those. The other thing to be aware of in the management scale, we don't have step increases like our non-reps and union employees do. So every year, the non-reps and union employees get a 3% increase because they get up a step where the management and directors do not. We are kind of subject to what we may or may not get. So every year, that compression just gets tighter and tighter. So that's kind of why we made the adjustments to the management scale. Additionally, we didn't have minimums and midpoints that needed to get added because we were not compliant with Washington State salary transparency laws.
All right, I appreciate that explanation. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other lights on. So if I could get, I guess we're going to do it in two motions. So if I could get the first one for Mayor Protem Grimm.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4808 concerning wages for certain administrative, professional, non-management personnel for calendar year 2026.
All right.
Second.
So we got a motion by Mayor Protem Grimm. We got a second by Councilwoman Brahas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the opposed say nay? Okay, looks like unanimous. Thank you. Now we're going to go on to the second motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4809 concerning the salaries for management positions for the calendar year 2026.
Second.
So we got a motion by Mayor Protem Grimm, and we got a second by Councilwoman Brahas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
All right, so it looks like it's a 5-1 on that. All right, so with that, we're going to jump to ordinance, or number C, which is ordinance number 4805, ambulance utility rate study. And again, we're going to go with interim Director Garcia.
Good evening, Council. So early November, the rate model was presented by FCS, which really goes into the cost of service and just kind of forward-looking for the next few years. And two options were kind of discussed at that time by council. So one was the 80% rate model, which includes the required by RCW of 420 from general fund. So there is the 80% model and then 100%. So those are the two options that were discussed at that time by council. So we bring those two ordinances here today to discuss which one the council would like to move forward with.
All right, well, thank you for that report. Does anybody have any questions or, before we get to the vote? Let's start off with Councilman, where are you going to make?
I was like explaining my votes. I mean, if we have a motion for motion A, I'm just going to be a no. I talked about it last time. I think we should do 100%. I do respect Ms. Thompson's testimony from earlier, but you know, we're subsidizing $3 million, close to $3 million bucks. And I just feel like we need to start reining in some of this general fund overspending. And so I'd like to see that money shifted to other places. So you know, I think the council will probably vote 80%, but I'm just going to be not for that this time. Thank you.
All right, I appreciate that. Let's go with Councilman Cotta.
Yeah, just to reiterate in the presentation we received, you know, our 911 calls have gone up 61.5% when the population's only increased 6%. And so there's a lot more calls to the fire department to help really support people's health. And you know, they have a program in place now. You know, Chief Colly can correct me if I'm wrong. If I get this wrong, let me know. But they're working on making sure that people are calling the appropriate places so that we don't put a drain on this part of the system. That being said, it looks like we can get more efficient with the process. And if that's possible, I don't, I don't know if I feel comfortable putting the whole 100% out there. I'd rather see the 80. And hopefully, we can get more efficient as a city to help not bring that full amount to fruition in the sense that we need that whole 100%. So I'm for the 80%. And also, I understand that, you know, it's a $20 hike per month if we go for this 100%. That's a burden on a lot of people. We're paying the taxes anyway, one way or the other. But I understand seeing that on your bill every month, it's a difficult thing. So I'm for the 80%.
All right, I do appreciate that, Councilman Cotta. Well, let's have Mayor Protem Grimm... Um, well, let's uh, have Mayor Protem Grim start off with a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number four-eight-zero-five amending the Pasco Municipal Code section three dot three-five dot zero-one-zero. Ambulance utility fees effective January first, twenty-twenty-six at eighty percent and future authorized publication by summary only.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. We have a second by Councilman Brahas. So let's go with a, a roll call on this, cause we're not sure on how it's gonna go. So let's just get this done.
Councilmember Heran Hernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Peralis.
No.
Councilmember Brahas.
Yes.
Councilmember Cotta.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grim.
Yes.
Mayor Milm.
A yes.
It passes five to one.
Alright, thank you for that. Let's move on to item D, resolution number four-six-eight-six Pasco Public Facilities District Aquatics Facility Management and Operations Interlocal Agreement. And we're gonna start it off with Director Jesse Rice.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Um, in addition to myself, I have, I don't know if you've met Matt Watkins and Matt Watkins Day. So he's representing the Public Facilities District uh, this evening. Um, tonight before uh, you, we have a resolution uh, updating an I L A uh, between the City of Pasco and the Pasco Public Facilities District uh, for the city to provide operations and management of the aquatic center. Um, this request started back in September uh, when both city staff and P P F D approached city council about the possibility of partnering with the city to provide operations and management. At that time, uh, council directed staff to do some research and start looking into that area. Um, since that time, we, uh, staff have worked along with the P P F D board to come up with an updated I L A um, which uh, city staff, uh, myself have provided updates along the way, asking for additional input or feedback on what uh, city council would like to see in the I L A to ensure that we have a uh, a, a good agreement in place that protects the City of Pasco taxpayers, that uh, reduces risks and liability and also outlines exactly what the city's providing and those costs that to do so. So at this evening, I believe we have what we're calling our final draft. Of course, that draft is up to approval by city council. Um, that draft has included a lot of those uh, areas that we have focused on and talked about, including uh, limits of liability. Uh, management operational administrative services that are gonna be provided, budget. Um, annual adjustments to payment um, as needed, um, development of aquatic facility and equipment maintenance policies and plans. Um, provisions for insurance and then of course, initial term renewal and termination provisions of the agreement, which I'll highlight that we did agree ultimately present a three-year plan with an option to, for either uh, either organization with twelve months notice to cancel that agreement. So that leaves us um, a lot of flexibility. And also note that this I L A's been updated several times in the last twenty-four months to amend and to better work together uh, for the uh, overall uh, construction and opening of the aquatic center. Um, so with that, a little bit of background, since this is a developed, uh, city staff uh, did hire um, our own legal counsel so that city's current legal counsel could represent the public facilities district. And we'd have both legal councils representing each organization. Um, we used our contracted legal service to help uh, finalize the uh, agreement that uh, was presented before you uh, this evening. Um, that agreement was jointly worked on in two separate sessions uh, last week, both with city staff and with the public facilities district to take a look at that agreement and to uh, ensure that both uh, organizations uh, understood and agreed to those terms so that when presented to you tonight, it had a good possibility of passing both us and then and about in a few weeks with the uh, public facilities district so that this could start January first and allow plenty of time for operational startup. With that, I think I threw a lot of words at you at a really short amount of time, but again, I can answer any questions. Or again, we have Executive Director uh, Matt Watkins here to answer any protection, uh, potential questions on this uh, resolution or the I L A in general. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for that, uh, Director Rice. Do we have anybody here on the dais that would uh, question for Rice or, or former mayor Matt Watkins?
Alright, I guess with that, then I would ask city council to consider uh, passing the resolution, authorize the city manager to uh, sign this agreement as presented before you this evening. And uh, we could move forward with uh, the, the next steps, which include working with the P P F D board to come up with these uh, policies and procedures as explained in the outline, start our lifeguard recruiting program and uh, plan to open up this facility in about six short months. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you for that. So yeah, let's uh, forget a mayor, a motion, Mayor Protem Grim.
I move to approve resolution number four-six-eight-six authorizing the city manager to execute a new interlocal agreement between the Pasco Public Facilities District and the City of Pasco for administrative and financial services and for management and operations of the new aquatic facility.
I second that very much.
Alright, so thank you. So we got a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. We got a second by Councilman Brahas. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Alright, looks like we got another five to one. Thank you for that. Did you wanna say any words?
I just wanna say thank you, not only on behalf of the Public Facilities District, but also the people of Pasco and, and everybody appreciate uh, everything that your council, the council has done. It's an important community or asset. Uh, we're gonna do our best to uh, open it and be the best aquatics facility in the state. Uh, and uh, appreciate your vote of confidence. And also we'll do our best to uh, even sway you, Mr. Peralis too. We will try and operate it as diligently as we can and appreciate uh, uh, everybody's support and discussion on this.
Alright, well, thank you for that. I know uh, it's been a long time coming, but.
And you guys were, I expected a long meeting tonight, so I was trying to time it and ask my uh, board members. I do have uh, one board member and I think a second one's here to show support as well. Uh, they're uh, they're also very happy that this is moving forward.
Alright, well, thank you for that. We are very excited to see how it turns out. And uh, again, hopefully it is the best aquatic facility in the state of Washington. We'd, we'd love to see that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna jump to item E, which is resolution number four-six-eight-nine professional services agreement with InfoSend Incorporated for utility bill printing and mailing services. And this is also gonna be by interim director Garcia.
Good evening, council. Um, yeah, so we have a resolution here for um, Infosend is a contractor for um, printing and mailing our utility bills. Uh, so this service is currently um, with a contractor that we've had since two thousand, so twenty-five years now. And um, the uh, of the service has been reliable, it just hasn't been able to keep up with the new um, kind of expectations and demands and um, just the quality has really uh, decreased over the years. And um, one simple example is earlier this year, they said they weren't able to uh, print in red ink anymore, which is a s- kind of a silly thing, but that's just kinda shows that level of service has really been declining and they've been struggling to keep up with our growth and our uh, needs for the community. Um, so the uh, city went through a R F P process and we received five proposals. Um, and, and through that process, we evaluated uh, which met the needs of the city and um, and also was uh, competitive in price. And so uh, Infosend is the one that we have uh, coming to recommend. Um, overall, um, council, I recall that in late twenty-twenty-three, the city did a conversion of our utility billing software and this uh, vendor integrates directly with that software. So there's a lot of uh, efficiency that comes out of that. There's also a lot of um, services that they are able to offer, um, such as being able to, right now, if a customer has a, you know, their water line and they have maybe a fire line or they, uh, they actually get two different bills mailed to them. So that's uh, postage is increased and all of that. And it's just kinda inefficient and inconvenient to the customers. But that is a, you know, a very common service that they offer and it's called householding. So now um, that example customer would now just get one envelope with multiple um, pages in there. So that is a simple item, but it does uh, cut down on costs, especially when we're sending out thousands of bills a, a week. So um, overall, uh, this is replacing our contractor and um, there is uh, expected savings with the new contract. Um, and there's enough budget to support that. So it's not a budget amendment, it's just giving authority to city manager to execute the contract. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alright, well, it looks like we got some questions already. So we're gonna start off with Councilman Brahas.
Thank you. Um, so what I'm reading here is there's an expected savings of sixty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, and actually that's um, it's for the biennium. I missed type there. Yeah, it's those thirty thousand roughly a year.
Okay. Just wanted to.
And it could be a, a little more in savings. Um, that is if everything stays as is, but there are some expected process improvements with the new contractor. So um, it's hard to know exactly what that savings is gonna, going to look like, but probably within the first three months, we'll be able to see that.
And it could potentially increase in savings?
We, yeah, we could have more of a savings.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you for that. Not seeing any other lights, so if I could get a motion, Mayor Protem Grim.
I move to approve resolution number four-six-eight-nine authorizing the city manager to execute the professional services agreement with Infosend Incorporated for utility bill printing and mailing services.
Can we get, okay. Well, let's uh, give Mr. Hernandez the second. So we have a first by Mayor Protem Grim and we got a second by Councilman Hernandez. So all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay? Alright, unanimous. Alright, so we're gonna go on to item F, ordinance number four-eight-one-one creating the Pasco Municipal Code section two-point-one-five-zero-point-two-four-five, city manager discretionary day off. And again, let's push it off to city manager Harold Stewart to tell us more about this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, as we discussed at the last work session last week, um, this is accomplishing potentially two things. And that is I would like to close city offices December twenty-sixth and make that a, an additional paid day off for city staff. One, out of appreciation for the hard work they've done this year, uh, with a lot of turnover and transition and leadership in council and staff. And then the second thing it helps potentially accomplish is it would actually uh, change city code. That would allow me the discretion to make that determination once per year if I deem it appropriate. So for example, um, if the Fourth of July falls on a Thursday, I could potentially give that Friday in between off as well. Uh, it's not guaranteed that that is given every year, but it does give me the ability to do that if, if I determine it to be appropriate. It also requires me to give twenty-one day notice so that way to the council. So that way when I make that decision, if you disagree with it, you have at least one or two council meetings to discuss that before it goes into effect. So be happy to answer any questions if there is any.
Alright, I do like the idea of uh, having the council be able to weigh in on this. So thank you for putting that in there. Um, let's go start off with Mayor Protem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, and I just wanted to thank staff for this. This is our way of, I guess, you know, putting our money where our mouth is, so to speak. But we have put a lot on staff over the last couple of years. I mean, you think of all the, the changes we've done to the, to the code to redoing, um, oh my, my goodness, getting rid of the rental inspection program or getting rid of all the fees and permits needed for common household projects or redoing the mobile food vending, or I mean, the list just goes on and on. And so I know staff has put a lot of time and effort into this and um, I know there's been pressure from time to time of, you know, us wanting stuff maybe sooner than they can always get it. And so I think this is a great way of saying thank you and showing our appreciation, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you for those comments. I'm not seeing any other lights, so Mayor Protem Grim, if I could get a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number four-eight-one-one amending the Pasco Municipal Code by creating section two dot one-zero-five dot two-four-five. City manager discretionary day off and further authorized publication by summary only.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. We got a second by Councilman Brahas. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay? Alright, unanimous, like it's, so we have a second motion. If I could get that, Mayor Protem Grim.
I move to confirm the city manager's scheduled discretionary paid day off on December twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Alright, so we got a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. We got a second by Councilman Cotta. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay? Yep, looks like unanimous. Alright, let's go on to G, resolution number four-six-eight-seven. Change order number four, Sanford Parkway Broadmoor Intersection Improvements by Tappany. And this is gonna be by, I am not seeing her, so uh, alright.
Good evening, good evening, mayor and council. Um, my name is Mary Heather Ames. I'm your deputy public works director. Um, and I am following up to last week, you had a full presentation on this item. There was a question from a member of council about reaching out to the Pasco School District to inquire about helping to fund this change order. Uh, we have started that process. However, Delta High School is a collaboration between all three school districts. Um, so coordination with Richland and Kenway needs to happen. And with the holiday last week, it has not happened yet. So um, what I would request is that council moves forward with this change order and we will continue to pursue the conversation with the school districts. Um, that then if they are able to contribute to this change, we can do that. However, we can keep the contractor moving forward and ordering the long lead items. So I wanted to provide that update and then recommend that we move forward with this. Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you for your reports. Does every member of the council have any questions or? Let's start off with Councilman Brahas.
Hey, Mayor, I was, I was the one who asked, so I appreciate um, the staff following up. Thank you very much.
Alright, well, thank you for that. I'm not seeing any other lights, so let's get a motion, Mayor Protem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number four-six-eight-seven authorizing the city manager to sign and execute change order number four with Taponi Incorporated for the Sanford Parkway Broadmoor Intersection Improvements Project.
Can we get a second? Second. Alright, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. We got a second by Councilman Cotta. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay? Again, now they're unanimous. Thank you very much, council. Let's jump to the item number H, resolution number four-six-eight-eight capital improvements planned for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-thirty-one projects. And we are gonna have interim director Garcia.
Good evening. Um, yeah, so on November tenth, uh, we presented um, the kinda general projects. So all the transportation and parks and uh, buildings and facilities projects. Um, then the following week, on the seventeenth, all the utility uh, related projects were presented uh, for the six years and along with all the different funding sources for each. And the one notable item is the water uh, projects list, um, depending on any, whatever rate is adopted later um, in twenty-twenty-six. I would kind of tweak that a little bit based off of um, those different scenarios that are available in that rate model. So the um, the water is the only one that is subject to change. Uh, but all others are um, in line with um, for example, the sewer is in line with the rate study that was presented there. So um, overall, um, discussion was held on those two sessions. Um, and uh, we are here requesting the uh, approval of the resolution for the six-year plan. And also in your packets, there's a um, link to a site and it will um, be live on our website um, tomorrow, uh, which has also the list of all the projects. And you can uh, click on the map and see the diff- each project has uh, just kinda talks about the scope of the project, shows the different funding sources and the, the timeframe for each project. Uh, so that will be available on the city's website uh, starting tomorrow and it's available in your packets now. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alright, does any member of the dais have any questions for uh, interim director Garcia? Well, I am not seeing any other lights on that. So if I could get a motion, Mayor Protem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number four-six-eight-eight approving the capital improvement plan for the calendar years twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty-one.
Alright, uh.
Brahas seconded.
Alright, just making sure. So we got a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. We got a second by Councilman Brahas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay? Again, now they're unanimous. Thank you. We're gonna jump to item number twelve, unfinished business. I'm not seeing anything listed. So we're gonna jump to thirteen, which is new business. So we have a CIPA flexible categorical exemption thresholds update. And again, this, well, this is gonna be by Director Haley Matson.
Thank you very much.
She's not here, so it's gonna be.
Yeah, she's not here this evening. Thank you, uh, uh, mayor and council. Good evening. And I am Craig Raymond, Deputy Director for C E D, uh, filling in for Haley this evening. And uh, in light of uh, Councilmember Grim's list of, or, or the recognition of the exciting projects that we've been a part of, uh, we have one more to talk about this evening. And uh, this project is in our current work plan that provides uh, tangible improvements to our development review process. And the CIPA threshold amendments is a major step forward in the streamlining our process for a lot of different projects. On an annual basis, uh, the City of Pasco processes roughly double the amount of CIPA reviews in our neighboring uh, communities. Uh, our current thresholds have actually been in place for a number of decades. Uh our current thresholds have actually been in place for a number of decades. Uh based on that, uh staff finds uh that it's time to update in a manner that state law permits with our proposed amendments. We intend to be roughly consistent with other or other neighboring municipalities uh providing a certain measure of consistency for area developers, which I think is a good thing. Uh our focus is also to ensure that SEPA review is reserved projects with a higher likelihood of having a substantive impact where additional environmental review is likely to be more appropriate. One additional thing to note is that SEPA exemptions do not equate to authorization or development approval. Uh city, state and federal regulations and permit review are still mandatory regardless of the SEPA exemption status. Um here are the primary changes uh that staff is proposing at this time. As you can see, it's pretty substantial. Uh examples include single family, uh increasing the threshold from four to thirty units. Uh that includes units under fifteen hundred square feet, uh multifamily from four to sixty units. Commercial office, school, recreational, four thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet and twenty parking spaces to ninety parking spaces. Another significant one is really the fill and excavation from one hundred cubic yards to one thousand cubic yards. So as you can see, uh these are pretty substantial and and they will streamline the the development process, as I mentioned, for for many different projects. Uh one thing that will not change, however, is when sensitive conditions exist, uh shorelines, wetlands and other areas covered under critical areas and shoreline ordinances. In addition to areas with a high-risk archaeological designation, these areas will still undergo appropriate environmental review. That's not changing. Uh staff has undergone considerable outreach to area jurisdictions, affected agencies, including uh WASDOT and tribal agencies. Neither agency has objected to the proposal, but has shared helpful processing practices and coordination measures to ensure effective communication subsequent to the threshold amendments. As such, uh at this time, staff is requesting that the city council set February second, two thousand twenty-six. Can't believe I'm saying two thousand twenty-six already, uh for a February hearing, uh to consider the ordinance of amending title twenty-three. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that report. I guess I'm gonna need glasses, because I saw the Craig, but I couldn't grab out the rest, so uh.
It's okay.
But I I do appreciate the report.
Quite right, thank you.
Uh let's start off with Mayor Portem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I I appreciate the call out, Mr. Raymond, yes, and your leadership on this. And this has not been a short task, and I know it's one that's been really, you know, on the minds of the development community for a long time. And I appreciate um Ms. Mattson taking it across the finish line. And I know our deputy city manager also had her hands in it um before Ms. Mattson's arrival, working with that. So I know this is actually a big win for Pasco, a big win for just getting rid of some of the uh you know, I some of its bureaucracy and red tape, it's it's really just more, I think, outdated, as you pointed, just, you know, for for decades. These minimum thresholds thresholds from just a long time ago. So I really appreciate staff's work on this. Thank you.
Yes, can't uh couldn't say it better, but uh let's go with Councilman Braus.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I just got a question in regards to the in regard in regards to the thresholds. Um I'm looking at the WAC code, um one ninety-seven dash eleven dash eight hundred. So I saw they all increased. Are we going off the unincorporated UGA numbers or the incorporated UGA numbers?
Incorporated.
Incorporated?
Within the city limits.
Okay, because I'm looking at the code here, it looks like we could go up to a lot more than what's on the presentation. So like for multifamily, we have sixty, but it says in under incorporated, we can go up to two hundred.
Correct, and and this is what we're recommending at time. Again, being consistent with some of the other neighboring jurisdictions as well.
Can we go back to that s- screen? I don't know, I think if we're gonna we're gonna change things, I I say we can, we should change things, I'm talking to the council now, um to what this code is allowing us. So single family is thirty, um or no, single, yeah, single family residential. I mean, do we need to put something in for certain project types? Because there's another one with single family residential with the total square footage less than fifty hundred square foot in in and under that column, that can go up to one hundred units. And then for multiple family, multifamily, we you have sixty, but we could do two hundred. Um ag one, you have forty thousand square foot, office, school, commercial recreational commercial recreational service storage building and parking facilities, thirty thousand, looks like you have twenty with ninety parking spaces. Um I I if we're gonna do this, I'd rather just, if incorporated UGA says this, I say we just go with that. So that would be my ask, that we update that stuff, update those thresholds to what it says in the in the in the law.
Okay, well, I know right now there, we're talking about a public hearing in February, so I know uh maybe other members of the public wanna tell us what they think and then be on council's decision whether we move forward. Um but I do appreciate your input on this.
Mr. Mayor, um if I could add to that, there's definitely a variation of uh what can be an exemption. And Pasco was at the minimum um of um of the exemptions, which has been a big issue for a long time. And part of that was the development community's frustration as uh Councilmember Grim, or sorry, Mayor Protem Grim mentioned. Um the the challenge with going to the top level is our codes are not there yet. We've made good progress. Uh Director Mattson and Deputy Director Raymond have made strides uh in this area. You've also done a lot of work as a council uh on updating the transportation impact fee. We're looking at connection fees for utilities. Uh as you increase that exemption, you need to have a a lot of codes that are up to par. So that was the challenge that we came across. It's not just changing the exemption levels. It is what are other things that the code and the state requires us, sorry, the state requires us to have so that um some of these concerns of um inadequate infrastructure, uh inability of the city to be able to support the growth is not there. So one of the fears that we have is if we go at that maximum level, number one, all of our codes are not as strong as the state would require us to be. Uh so that takes us a couple of years to probably get there, uh at least from my last uh estimation. But I know Director Mattson and Deputy Director uh Raymond have a lot better capabilities than I do. And um the other part is our partners, like Department of Transportation, like tribal um uh partners might have uh concerns over uh exempting a hundred units. And so then they you start talking about transportation impact fee and whether that's adequate or not. And if you remember, when we were talking about transportation impact fee, we talked about the first step. We've not touched it in a very long time. Let's do a reasonable approach and get to the first step. When you start going higher, you have to really look at a lot more projects and make sure that you're re- really ready for it to exempt it at a higher level. So I would, I would caution you on that, uh just because um it'll take us longer to make this incremental step. But definitely, uh there's nothing stopping the city in a year or two to look at this exemption level again and increase it as we have um sustainable uh infrastructure fees to be able to keep building. Uh but also changing and revising our codes to meet the state standards.
All right, thank you for the clarification. Uh let's go back. Did you want to comment, Mr. Braus?
I guess we'll just wait till the hearing. I guess we'll see what some of the development community is saying. I I don't agree with a lot of what Miss Signal said, um but, because I don't like hearing, well, it's gonna be a couple of years. You made some good points, but, you know, I guess maybe I gotta do my research about um other cities and what their where their thresholds are at. But I mean, if we need to do more work and change our codes, then let's just do that. I mean, you know, I can go on and on about the different instances with our code that we updated this fifteen years, twenty years. So if we need to update stuff, then let's just update it. But um some of the companies you may have good merit, but I'll do my research and I'll I'll reach out to some people in development community and see what they kind of think and and what and I'll just go from there, but I look forward to the February hearing. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for those uh thoughts. Um not seeing any other lights, so let's get a motion by Mayor Portem Grim.
I move to schedule a public hearing on February second to consider an ordinance updating the Pasco Municipal Code provisions related to SEPA threshold requirements and related procedural changes.
Got a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. Can we get a second? Okay, we got a second by Councilwoman Brahas. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say nay? Yep, unanimous, thank you. We're gonna jump to item number fourteen, which is miscellaneous discussion. And we're gonna start off with a city manager report by Harold Stewart.
Yes, uh Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh first and foremost, I want to see if there's any questions about the report that have been included in here. Not seeing any, just a couple of updates real quick. Uh first and foremost, uh we continue to work on um wreaths across America. It that's scheduled for, um sorry, my computer logged out. I believe it's December thirteenth at one P M. Anyway, we have forty-four wreaths still, so we appreciate a lot of the public stepping forward and sponsoring that program. But we still do have uh forty-four wreaths available, so we can make sure that we have one on every grave. So yes, it's uh December thirteenth at eleven A M, sorry, not eleven P M. Forty-four wreaths still available. Um so we can, we can treat every uh veteran's grave at the City View Cemetery. Uh so there's still time to to sponsor. You can go to our website. Uh we have our wreaths across America page on our website if people are interested in donating to that. We're also looking for volunteers to help place the wreaths on the grave that day. And um actually, we had over three hundred volunteers and we're looking to meet or exceed that again uh this year. And you can sign up again on our website at our wreaths across America page. I did, I want to wait, make one public announcement, too. Um we've been busy here the last few weeks. With uh interviewing and preparing for twenty twenty-six, and I I want to announce that we have hired a new finance director. Uh Kevin Hebden will be joining us. He currently works for Franklin County Transit and previously worked for the Pasco School District and uh for in their finance departments and uh pre- a previous assistant state auditor as well. So we're looking forward to the expertise and leadership that he will bring to our organization. He will start December twenty-ninth uh with us. And so will be available at the first uh meetings in January. And a special thank you to Mayor Milney and Councilmember Cotta for participating on those interview panels and helping us make a good decision. Also, thank you to uh Councilwoman Brahas and former Councilmember Blaisdell for sitting in on the interview panels for the municipal court judge. And um also Mayor Protem Grim and Councilmember Paralus for sitting in on our interviews with regards to our um city attorney law firm contract. That'll be in in front of you next Monday uh for approval uh as well. So if there's no further questions, just a reminder to you that this will be our last regular meeting for this month. So there will be no regular city council meeting on December fifteenth and wish everyone a happy holidays and a happy new year. And most of all, you will see next Monday, and then after that, we can say, see you next year. So and a special welcome to Councilmember Hernandez uh as well, and we look forward to serving with all of you next year.
Well, thank you for that report. I do appreciate all the council members taking time out of their day to sit on these interviews. It's uh difficult, like for myself or anybody else, taking off time from work. But uh I know we're all dedicated to the city of Pasco and wanting to make Pasco a better place from when we got on council to when we leave. So again, it's uh definitely just my gratitude, because I know Councilman Cotta and myself spent like five hours. And I'm sure you guys also spent a men- number men or a number of hours uh trying to do your best. And I again, I really do appreciate the time and energy that you guys put forward. So let's uh start off with Councilwoman Braus.
I want to do some um shout-outs to some staff that I may not see next week, being that this is my last month here. Mr. Uh uh trouble, sorry, um Raymond. Um I want to say thank you for making it fun, for making it easy, for under, for making me, helping me understand process. Way before Ms. Mattson came on board. So thank you, and if I don't see you again, it's been fun meeting you. Uh Ms. He- mother, Mary Heather Ames. I always, it's a tongue tie. Um if I don't see you again, again, thank you for the tremendous work that you do for everything that that your department does. I know Ms. Sarah is an extremely knowledgeable person, but you have a wealth of knowledge as well. And I just want to say thank you very much for everything that you do in your department. And I'm pretty sure I will see the rest of you next week, so I won't say bye, but I will bump into you, some of you at some point soon. And uh for the general community, you will still see me next Monday, but I want to say thank you to everyone that's been consistently here. Um I will not point fingers uh specifically, but I do want to say thank you to all the department, department heads and to all the staff within your departments. So thank you again.
All right, thank you for that. Uh Mr. Cotta, did you have your light on or?
I I was, you were talking about the interviews that we did and just want to say it was my pleasure. It's fun to work with the group. It's fun to listen to the interviews, so um appreciate the opportunity to serve and to listen and to help contribute. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. So let's go on to Mayor Portem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to put Ms. Garcia on the spot real quick and say, we updated our new utility billing. And for people that haven't responded to that yet, would you be so kind as to tell people what they need to do so their bill gets paid?
Yes, and so we've actually had quite a bit of um activity already. Within the first day, we had um about almost two thousand customers that had already registered, which is very impressive. So that um you know, means that our communications team has really done a great job with outreach. Um so overall, you can um, there's online, there's how-tos that show you step by step how to uh set it up. There's also, uh you can call in and um, I don't have the number memorized, but you can call into utility billing and you can schedule an appointment with one of our representatives. And uh we have individuals that can either do it over the phone with your appointment time or you, we have some individuals that have been coming here and we just um have the computer and we just walk them through setting up their account. And um so then setting it all up for them, if they want to do the auto pay, we help them set that up. So um there's been, so far, we've had really good uh response to that. And um but the main items are, there's a lot of um the like self-service items that are online. Um and I think they're also working on a video here soon, but uh but again, the screenshots really show you step by step how to do all of it. Um but we're available to help and there's um no late fees for this, you know, next month to make sure. Or it might be longer, but for sure, the next month, yeah, month or two to uh make sure that everyone has good transition to to uh the new portal. But overall, um it's, it's been pretty positive.
Thank you, and yeah, don't worry, I don't think any of us have any memory, um numbers memorized anymore. But just for the sake of clarification, this is for every utility customer, everybody, since we changed the the portal. Every single customer needs to re-sign up, correct?
Yeah, so they need to log in, especially if you had um your auto pay set up. I know that's um, you know, kind of a set it and forget it item that you don't really go on uh online to do anything with it. But um if you need your account number, if you don't know what that is, you can uh, you know, call us, we can give you where your account number is. Or if you have e-statements, it should be in your um email from your prior month. But yes, if you have the auto pays, definitely go in and set that up again. Um there's also an option, if you don't have time to set it up now, you can just do a one-time payment as a guest and you don't have to set up. All you need is your um address and your um, and then you can just set it up, so.
Okay, appreciate that. Thanks for, yeah, getting all the info out and glad to hear so many people jumped on it. So two thousand down, how many more to go?
Yeah, that was on the first day, so I haven't checked it today, but after, um I think I checked Tuesday around ten and there is already close to two thousand.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you for that. I'm not seeing any other lights. So we are gonna jump on to number fifteen, which is exec session to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment per R C W forty-two point three, zero, point one, one, zero subsection I one, subsection G. And we're gonna need forty-five minutes, but I think we should take a ten-minute recess and because we're gonna have a long evening, so that we can get some coffee or uh do some stuff like that. So anyway, we're gonna be in exec session from nine o'clock and we should be back at nine forty-five. Again, appreciate everybody for showing up and thank you. All right, well, we are back from exec session and ready to finish up our meeting. So we're gonna jump to sixteen. So we're gonna jump to sixteen, which we already did, which was setting council position seven interviews, so we had good discussion. So we have sixteen A, which is election of candidates to interview for City Council at large, number seven position. And if I could get a motion, Mayor Portem Grim.
Yes, sir. I move to interview the following individuals for City of Pasco's Council Position Number Seven for Council at Large. Charlie Grig, Brad Gregory, Pat Jones, Melissa Blaisdell, Jerry Cochran, and Abel Campos at the December eighth, twenty twenty five Special Council Meeting.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
So we got a motion by Mayor Protem Grim. We got a second by Councilman Prowl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All right, Pasadena, we look forward to that in one week. And with that, we're gonna move on to number seven.
Just a quick question. I assume you want to use the same questions that we just used a few weeks ago? I just want to touch base and make sure, or did you?
Why don't we have staff like maybe mix them up, so that way they don't go back and see all the questions? Um, so if you come up with a new set of questions concerning how vital this is, uh, again, we're representing the whole city. I think it's very important, so if you can put together uh some, a new set of questions, and we could go from there.
Right, we'll work on that. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to number seventeen, which is adjournments. Thank you, everybody.